Good evening, I'm calling to order the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, November 18th, 2025, meeting to order. Please follow me with invocation. Our gracious Father, we just praise you, we thank you for your greatness, we thank you for the many blessings you bestow on Columbia County and the whole CSRA region. I pray that you be with us tonight, give us wisdom and insight, and we honor you in everything we do.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let the record show we have a full quorum of commissioners. Mr. Jim Steed, welcome. You have minutes from the November 4th, 2025, meeting in your packet. If you've had a chance to review them, I will accept a motion to approve them.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept these minutes as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Here he is. Look, see, you voted, it wasn't that bad. See, special recognition. I don't believe we have any today, do we? Right into the consent agenda. We have nothing on the consent agenda, how about that? Right, because we got Veterans Day. So, straight to the debate, I'm going to go to Commissioner Malir.
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve the request for the major PUD revision for property located at Tax Map 059A, Parcel 307, to reduce the side setbacks for an existing gazebo and reduce the rear setback for the existing pool, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 6th Planning Commission report, and approve an easement encroachment agreement.
Second.
This is an existing gazebo that was built about 2.6 feet off the property line, required to be five feet, based on size, also inside of a sewer easement, or, I'm sorry, storm easement, that requires an encroachment agreement. As well as the pool was permitted, however, it was permitted within 10 foot of the rear property line, it should have been 20, this is a PUD, so it has different rear setbacks than a normal neighborhood does. This is to get both of those into compliance. The HOA has seen it, that has approved this as well.
Any other questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Here he is.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove the request for rezoning from RA to S1 for property located at Tax Map 058, Parcels 218B, 218C, and 218D.
Second.
This is a request to go to this S1 zoning for a parking lot. They were wanting to park RVs, campers, tractor trailers, summer vehicles, would have a fence around it. This use is typically something you'd see in a C3 or a light industrial use. Staff did recommend disapproval. They did, applicant did state this was a transition use until they got sewer, and they would then come back and do something different. Not a long-term use.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 25-07, Chapter 90, zoning, Article 3, Commercial, Industrial, Professional, Special Planned Unit Development and Planned Development Districts, Section 90-97, Allowed Uses, Section 90-98, List of Lot and Structure Requirements, and establishing Section 90-101 DC Data Center District, Article 4, Supplemental Requirements, Section 90-139, Buffers and Screening, and Section 90-147, Use Provisions.
Second.
Thank you. This is a new zoning classification. Remember, this is a first reading, so it would require a second reading, should you decide to pass this tonight, it would require another reading as well. This text amendment actually affects several parts of our code, is specifically aimed at data center development, you know, as you know, that's been a big issue in our community for a while now. So, we've looked at other zoning ordinances from other jurisdictions, we've traveled to other places, we've seen some of the problems some other people have, we've tried to take that into consideration. We've also implemented what public input we got, as far as, or how it relates to this zoning ordinance. I will say that this zoning ordinance is probably one of the more stringent ones that we've seen, if I'm comparing them to the other ones. I'm sure nobody will be happy with everything in the zoning ordinance, but very specifically, not only does it create a data center zoning that we would want all data centers to fall under, it has very specific allowed uses, it has very specific lot and structure requirements, such as the height of the building to a maximum height. Buffers is probably one of the biggest things here, putting the buffers in place with the most intense zoning classifications that really you see in all of our zoning classifications, these buffer requirements are more stringent than those, certainly as it relates to how it buffers against residential. And then there's some additional use provisions in there as well. Mostly, I think some of the big things are sound, we have a restriction in there, a limit of 70 decibels, I'm speaking at about 70 decibels now, so just understand that's about a normal conversation. So, we have that in there, how generators can be tested and used, how lighting is going to be applied to the property, prohibition of wells, and anybody trying to tap into the aquifer or anything like that, that's completely not allowed in this zoning classification. Fencing is also another issue here, and then parking landscaping and those sort of things. So, I know you've all looked at the ordinance, but that just gives everybody else an overview of where we are, we do not go into this lightly, it's taken a lot of time and effort to try to create this zoning ordinance, and again, we have taken into consideration everything that we, has really been brought to our attention, whether it be from other jurisdictions, whether it be from our residents, or things that we've just heard in public meetings. I'll answer any questions you have.
For the benefit of the audience, will you please discuss first reading, second reading in that process, and how our timeline works out?
Right, so this is a, any change to the ordinance requires two readings, this is a first reading, as I said, so if it's approved tonight, it will go to the next commission meeting for the second reading, that would be the final reading, so it would be adopted after that. Anybody wanting to apply for a rezoning under that would then apply for the rezoning under the new DC ordinance after it's been put into effect, and they would have to be considered at a later date. So, this does not give anybody any right to do anything tonight, it is creating a zoning by right, but each one of those zonings would be heard at a later date. So, first reading tonight, if it passes, a second reading, it will then become an ordinance, and then it would require the normal process for any rezoning. So, the property would have to be posted, we'd have to have Planning Commission approval, Board of Commissioners approval before anything could move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Two people have asked to speak on this, Sylvia Elam. Will please state your name and address to the record, you have five minutes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Sylvia Elam, 4442 Oak Road. I am speaking against this, I understand that you feel that the standards that you have set are high based on everybody else, but if that were the case, so many people wouldn't complain. The 70 decibels may sound good, but just to say 70 decibels needs to be honed in, where? Where is that 70 decibels on that? 70 decibels over a long amount of time, washing machine, it is conversation with a microphone and not just typical conversation. That over time can lead to hearing damage, and again, it can, as I said at the Planning Commission, kill your bees off, very important that we don't. Our standards have been set, I think Columbia County needs to strive a little bit higher than we have. We really were supposed to be an A number one county, our county goes a little bit higher. I think we've just sort of taken the average, kind of saw some problems they had, and then we decided not, we won't use this, we won't use that, and I know that's the way you basically do it, but I think Columbia County needs to set higher standards. We could, and now I'm going to get a little snarky, and I apologize for that, we could even change the standards, instead of using the areas, it's agriculture, those people went out there for that reason. Why don't we take areas like Valley Brook? We can kind of blackstone them, buy them up, and then turn that, I know that's a little close to your house, Jim, but that's okay, you can get over that. But again, if we took Valley Brook, they already have water, they already have electricity, they're already used to the hearing the sounds of traffic, because they're right there by I-20. My mother, is why I met you guys before, when we were talking about Parkers, you could take that Sedgwick, which is where I live, I can't hear my water garden in the backyard anymore because of the sound of I-20, and I live in Sedgwick. My mom is over there at Bobby Jones at Wheeler, at Bobby Jones at Washington Road, she can't hear anything, nothing to do with her being 90, but at her home, you can't hear anything because of the traffic. So, if Parker's right there at the corner doesn't make it, because the traffic's going to be a nightmare, because we did have a death there from a traffic accident a little while ago, but if they can't get in and out, and Parker's can't make it there, they could buy up that whole area. Again, Blackrock them, buy them all up, and turn Martinez, because we've already turned it into a semi-Gordon Highway, we could make Martinez a data center. That way, those of us that are bought out could go get the homes that are left in Apling, if the data center is converted to rural with two acres like it was supposed to be. That was the vision before, but apparently, we are now no longer nearsighted, we are going farsighted, so thank you.
Ben Mueller, Ben?
Evening Commissioners, this is Ben Mueller, Pecan Road, in Apling. I'm here to talk about the zoning ordinance that was introduced at the last planning meeting. There are aspects I like, and aspects I think could be improved, for the best interest of the citizens. I'd like to address the improvements first. First and foremost, this ordinance is for future data centers only, it has zero impact on the property that is about to be closed on with Trammell Crowe. If Trammell Crowe is the good neighbor, you can claim that they're going to be, I formally request that you ask them to resubmit that zoning to go under the data center ruling.
We're going to do so.
Thank you. As far as noise, noise abatement was stated in the planning meeting as a 70-decibel limit at the exterior property line. I've got two copies of 9147, I printed off of the county website. Amazingly, one of them says, "Facilities may not emit noise that exceeds 70 decibels measured at the interior of the buffer." In a private meeting Mr. Wyatt and I had with Allison and Mike, they both said, "We'll probably set it for 70 at the building envelope." You have failed to hit any of the good standards, you went for the least standard. I have to move down. The noise does not, gold standard for the US right now is Prince William County, Virginia, their decibel limit is 55 decibels at the building envelope. Bartos, now we'll come home to Georgia, Bartow City is 65 decibels during the day, 55 at night. Lumpkin City is 60 during the day, 50 at night. Coetta City set limits of 10 decibels above pre-construction for daytime, and 5 decibels above pre-construction for nighttime. Additionally, the proposal does not address long-term monitoring and enforcement of the standard. Seasonal changes in foliage, changes due to disease or pest, we're all familiar with pine beetles, will impact the noise level. How do you propose to maintain that standard? Construction noise must be held to whatever standard is settled upon. You have spoken and said to us many times, this is a 10-to-20-year project, we will have construction, 2,000 to 4,000 employees every day for the next 20 years, running equipment. Noise is cumulative, you mentioned you were speaking at 70 decibels. 70 decibels is great for one thing, when you've been in a party, or in a large room, one person speaking is easy. When everybody's speaking, you can't hear a thing. Noise is cumulative, each additional device, building, generator, HVAC unit that they put in there will add to that noise. They still have to maintain whatever the standard is decided upon. On the lighting, the, when the Commissioners and I met, we discussed the International Dark Sky Standard, that's nowhere mentioned in the proposed standard, but it is a very recognized viable standard. Some of the neighboring counties, Bartow and Coetta, are improving their ordinances. They have stated that their maximum elevation for a light fixture to keep the glow close to the ground will be 25 feet for Bartow, 20 feet for Coetta, with a one-half-foot candle power limit at the property line. The 500-foot buffer adjacent to residential and agricultural zone properties is appreciated. There are, should be, there should not be options, however, for reducing that buffer to 250 feet, as is currently stated. Some of the other counties, J. County, Indiana, is their Planning Commission has the gold standard for the country, with a 1,000-foot setback from property lines, 2,500-foot buffer from residences, 500-foot buffer from road rights of way. The maximum building height, number five, the maximum building height for all other industrial and commercial buildings in the zoning standards is 55-foot. At the Planning Commission meeting, it was stated, where had been a couple of variances asking for a taller building, like Amazon, it was granted, so we figured, what the heck, let's go ahead. No, 55-foot should not be changed, it should be the maximum height. The sensation of operation standard is functionally useless. You put in a 90-day out of 180-day standard that says, "No power draw, I can get around that and bypass it by putting on one security light," I have power going through that building. Please evaluate an alternate enforceable standard. Further, your requirements, if they do decide to default on anything, to restore the property to the original condition within one year is also unenforce, unless you set up a security bond for every acre of disturbed ground. I would propose $100,000 per acre. When they finish putting it back to original, they can have their money back. Now, I'll move to some things that'll make you happier, the things that I agree with. The elimination of the wells from the data center zone is great, I appreciate that. However, you are not in charge of well permits, Georgia EPD is. So, I want you to make absolutely sure that they cannot override you, and that this zoning standard of no wells cannot be approved in a variance by the state. Secondly, the testing of generators being limited to weekdays, non-holidays, nine to five, and only once per month is appreciated. The 500-foot buffer adjacent to residential agriculture properties is a good start, I'd prefer it to be a little bit deeper, as I've already outlined. And then, lastly, having a line-of-sight restriction from the highest point on adjacent property to the highest point of the structures is also appreciated, and another good reason to maintain 55-foot maximum height for any buildings on the property.
Again, this is the first reading. Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Want to speak about the data center. They're right here, that comes in public comments, they asked to speak specifically about the ordinance. Voted, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, there's a motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. First reading, motion approved. Mr. Couch?
I make a motion to approve an independent contract with Southern Asphalt for milling and resurfacing of Memorial Park Trail, not to exceed $150,000.
Second.
So, we did receive damage to the trail behind the library during Hurricane Helene. We have this contract, the bid did come in at $120,537, however, we do expect to find some unforeseen circumstances out there as we make repairs, so we're asking for a budget of $150,000, covered by FEMA.
Reimbursable.
Reimbursable.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Here he is. See, no legal matters, no review, request for review by committee, we'll move into the public comment section. I've prepared a statement that I want to read, and then we'll, everybody that has to fill out a form can speak. And with this will be issued in a press release afterwards. I recognize that there's been considerable uncertainty surrounding the development of data centers in Columbia County, probably an understatement. At this juncture, I'm confident that the project is proceeding, and in light of this progress, I believe it's essential to provide you with the latest updates available to me. We have received confirmation that George Power has approved the proposed power consumption model. This approval brings us significantly closer to securing an end-user for the project. Just a reminder, all costs associated with infrastructure, construction, utility usage will be fully borne by the end-user, with no financial burden on the residents. I anticipate the developer will, end-user will complete the land acquisition before December 19th. Additionally, I've been informed that developer Trammell Crowe is attempting to acquire other properties in the vicinity. We have advised them that any such properties intended for data center use must comply with our newly established data center zoning classification. Furthermore, we've notified the developer that it's in our desire that the parcel owned by the Development Authority will be rezoned on the current S1 designation as data center. I do want to emphasize that the creation of this zoning involved a lot of deliberation, a lot of look, you may find, as Ben said, there may be other areas that have a particular point that may be stronger than ours. We did the best we could to make sure the regulations are rigorous and far from conciliatory, and impose some of the most stringent requirements we could find that we could make work. Now, I've frequently been asked why Columbia County is pursuing data centers with such interest. The reality is that these facilities are emerging, they're emerging industry trend, and they generate extraordinary levels of revenue, funds capable of transforming communities for generations to come. Regarding the allocation of this additional revenue, the top priority, and the reason we're doing this, our will is to deliver substantial tax relief to our residents. While some may express skepticism about whether this will materialize, I'm pleased to announce that we are working collaboratively with our state legislators to enact homestead tax relief and put it into state law, so that future commissions can't change this. Please note that these benefits will not materialize overnight, it's a multi-year endeavor, with revenues increasing, expected to escalate gradually. That said, it's my sincere hope that we'll begin to realize the tangible outcomes of our efforts within the next two, three years. Again, that'll be a press release that'll be sent out. Tracy here to speak.
I have to ask you a question. Can you go back and restate what you said about Trammell Crowe and the 1,000 acres?
Stay with me, I'll read it again. We've notified the developer that it's our desire that the parcel owned by the Development Authority will be rezoned from its current S1 designation to the data center. What we're passing?
The new?
Yes.
Right. Well, what I came up here to talk about was, you my conversation from the last zoning board meeting. First, I want to point out that on your website, you said, "To the citizens of this county," and I quote, "If you want your voice to be heard, plan to attend the meeting, commission meeting, which is considering a proposed ordinance for potential future data centers." I have to ask, did you really want our input? Because within two minutes of all the residents speaking about their concerns about this zone, you immediately passed the ordinance. Why the effort to engage the citizens if you had no intention of incorporating any of the suggestions that were offered? Once again, you misled the citizens into believing they have a voice, and that you value our input, but nothing ever changes. Instead, the zoning board rubber-stamped the new ordinance and passed it on up to you, and as obvious by the actions thus far, you've already made your decisions as it relates to the DC ordinance. I wrote this before you rubber-stamped it, but that's what I was going to say, was that you were going to rubber-stamp it. The road you are going on is going to have major impacts in the years to come for the citizens of this county, and you have effectively ignored the people you were elected to represent. My concern is still for the citizens that live in the Apling, Harlan, and Grove Town areas, whose only access to water is by wells. Do you even have any idea how many citizens depend on well water? Here.
Ma'am, we just passed a resolution, or better, it's in process, and said...
Let me get there. I recognize the DC ordinance states that no well is to be drilled, but the state of Georgia can override a county ordinance and allow well drilling to citizens of Columbia County, and the citizens of Columbia County need to understand that. The natural gas power generation by Georgia Power is going to be upwards of 4 million gallons of water per day, per power generator. The 2,000-acre site is estimated at 6 million gallons, and not to mention, the additional data centers being built on additional property in the Technology Park. In the future forward plan, which you will present at the end of the month, this map shows an extremely large amount of acreage, which extends the Technology Park onto both sides of the interstate. Based on your map, I'm estimating that's going to be 8,000 acres? So, I have to ask, where will all this water come from? How do you plan to support these industries and protect the citizens dependent on well water? Even as recently as September of this year, the EDAC Executive Committee meeting, you had a discussion on aquifers, well drilling, water rights, by asking about tapping, about water tapping capabilities for development. Your own EDAC is saying, "We need to start thinking about where we're going to get all our water from." Are you researching tapping into the aquifers because you have come to realize there isn't enough water capacity for further development, whether it's commercial, industrial, residential, beyond what you have already promised to Trammell Crowe and Georgia Power? Are you just now realizing that the water allotment from the Army Corps of Engineers isn't going to be enough in the years to come? I know you were warned of that possibility by the Savannah River Keeper in a previous VOC meeting. You stated there isn't enough water, and several surrounding communities that pull from the river don't have enough water for their fire suppression, and yet you want to take more? And to add to that, according to your Foundations for the Future, you're planning to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to increase your withdrawal permit. What would be your plan if they deny your request, or if they can't give you everything you're asking for? Will you drill wells into the aquifers, putting residents at risk of not having water for their homes? As this has happened across the country, most recently in Social Circle outside of Atlanta, where residents' wells have run dry. This is the same facility that you visited with your window tour, and you never, ever spoke with the area residents. I realize any impact to water availability for the citizens that are dependent on well water won't be felt immediately, as you have stated, this is a 10-to-20-year construction project. As more and more data centers, other industries, and developments come along, the impact will be incremental. Can you tell me why these developments override the protection of the citizens? It is apparent your goal is to generate revenues as quickly as possible, without ever thinking about the long-term consequences.
Mr. Drap, are you finished? I'm sorry, I was just going to ask for some clarification on some of the points that you made. Could you please address her question about who has authority over the wells, if it's EPD versus our zoning ordinance?
I certainly have thoughts on this, but I would not want to give an answer.
Let me address that. So, the county cannot enact any rule that is less stringent than the state, we can enact rules that are more stringent than the state. What we're talking about here is a zoning classification and conditions to zoning. What we're talking about here is a zoning classification and conditions to zoning. If we put something in the zoning, if we put something in our zoning ordinance that says no wells, it doesn't matter that the state permits them. If they drilled a well and it was in our zoning ordinance that they couldn't have them, they'd be in violation of their zoning, and we would then enforce that zoning on them. So, the fact that they may be able to go get an application to do that does not mean that they're going to be allowed to do that. That's why we put it in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So, it is more stringent than the state rules, not less stringent than the state rules.
Okay. And then you had a visual, it was a map from the Foundations for the Future, could you hold that back up for me? So, on the purple, Mr. Johnson, could you also clarify the legend for the purple location? It's for technology and industrial?
Yeah, so that is actually technology and industrial. So what you're seeing there is also Amazon, it's also the quarries on Columbia Road, it's also John Deere, yes it is.
I know it is. I'm talking about this area.
Yeah, the Amazon is right in the middle of that.
No, it is.
Yeah, and there's other club cars there, that's technology and industrial property, not just technology.
Then why is the county wanting to go back to U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and say, "We need to increase our intake"? Why is the county saying that we need to, in your own development authority, saying, "We need to start talking about aquifers and drilling rights and water rights by asking about water tapping capabilities for development"?
I can't speak for the development authority, but I can speak for the county. We are a growing county, and we are permitted to draw more water today from the lake and the river than we were 20 years ago. 20 years from now, we'll be doing the same thing. We'll be asking that, we are a growing community. I will tell you that every, we have heard from the public, you said we haven't taken anything into consideration. We most certainly have. We are talking to the developers, any developer that we're talking to, we are saying that we want a closed-loop system. We don't even, we don't even want to go the 6 million gallons a day. And I don't know if you know to the point of where we are today, as far as how much water Columbia County has or produces, but we are permitted to produce about 54 million gallons a day. On the hottest day, we use about 38 million. We have 16 million in capacity today without drawing anymore, but nobody's really talking about that. Columbia County has sufficient water. You talked about Social Circle, I have spoken to the county manager in Newton County, we've had a conversation with them, I've also spoken to the folks that were on the Meta team, and they do not have wells at Social Circle. So I don't know where you're getting your information from, but they do not have them. The residents are upset because the data center came, and they're having the same narrative. I've had the conversations.
I understand, and so have I.
Okay, well, then we'll agree to disagree.
Yes, we can, because there are citizens in that area that I know are looking into a class action lawsuit because they don't have water.
And they may not, but you also-
And I don't want to see that.
You also made reference to the River Keeper saying that there was issues upstream. When she made that point, the issues upstream are not from lack of water, they are from a failing county and city system. And I called the county manager and city manager and confirmed that. So, what you're saying, while some of it is true, not all of it is true. So you're asking for clarification, I'm trying to give that to you, but I don't think you want the clarification.
No, I'm listening to what you're saying, but it is very obvious that the county is going to run right through with everything. What you did with the zoning, you had that prime example. "If you want your voice to be heard, come to these things, talk to us," that, and you turn right around and rubber stamp it. I have yet to ever see anything in these commission meetings where you disagreed with you and you disagreed with this one on anything. It is all 100% approved before anybody ever gets up here.
I can't speak to that.
Take a look at the videos. Like I said, 10 to 20 years from now, this is my concern. Citizens, Harlem, Aplin, areas of Grove Town, all these individuals that depend on well water, obviously there's not enough, otherwise you wouldn't be going back to Core. Wouldn't be going back to-
We're not going back to, we are not going to the Core for data centers.
You wouldn't be talking about trying to increase the water intake.
Yes, we do, absolutely, we need to. There are almost 170,000 people in this county. We've grown by double digits every since 1950. We are producing more water today than we did 20 years ago, and 20 years from now, we have to be able to do the same thing. We have an award-winning water system in Columbia County.
Then why are you talking about drilling into the aquifers?
We're not. You're talking about something the development authority talked about, the county is not talking-
Because the development authority is looking, they represent you-
No, they don't represent me, they do not. They don't.
You guys direct to them what you want.
Ma'am, you are misinformed.
Oh, am I misinformed?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, let me tell you something. Chaney said in her interview, and I wasn't going to put it up here, find it right here, in her interview with Austin Rhodes, she said- Find it here. Actually, the one I dropped off, but she said that she, when she first came to work here, and I'm going to paraphrase what she said, because I removed it off of the sheet, said that "I went to the board, and I said, 'What is it you see? What do you want me to work on?'" Right? When she first got hired in, and she was told, her words, "A data center."
I was in the meeting, and I said it, you want me to tell you what I said? I was in the, I said it, you want me to tell you what I said?
He said it.
Ma'am, he was in the meeting, but I said it. I said, when she came and wanted to know, we said we want clean industry. What we don't want is, we don't want smoke stacks, we don't want battery plants, we don't want anything that's going to tax the natural resources of this county, and we said, "We want to look at clean industry, we want things that could provide tax relief to our citizens, such as a data center."
Oh, well, while we're on the tax subject, on your own website for the White Oak Technology Park, on your website, you have- "The facility will contribute to the local tax base funding public services such as local fire departments, emergency response, and infrastructure improvements, as well as generate annual tax revenue for Columbia County schools." Where does this say anything about giving tax relief to the citizens? It's not even on your own website.
Ma'am, what's that got to do with it? I apologize.
No, he brought up the tax.
That was the reason, went after the reason, when we had that meeting, I said, "I want tax relief, I don't want a lot of," people in the county don't want lots of cars, they don't want more housing, I said, "They want tax relief."
Why is it not on your own site? It's not even on there.
If I may just make a point of clarification, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's on the development authority website, what she's speaking of? What you're reading is from the development authority website for the White Oak Park. What we're speaking of, which is tax relief, is the wish of the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
Those are two different entities. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, well, that's very interesting.
And you mentioned the Corps of Engineers.
Because I'm kind of curious-
I heard the 6 million gallon point early on, I reached out to the Corps of Engineers and said, "Is this a problem?" Let me finish, then you. I said, "Is this a problem?" And they said, "You realize that Lake Thurman, the whole lake, Clarksville evaporates 650 million gallons a day in the heat of the summer?" I said, "No, I'm asking you if 6 million, if it's a problem." They said, "No, not at all, it evaporates more in a month than you'll use in a lifetime." And so, it just gave me perspective. Nobody up here is perfect, and, but the answers I got made sense, and so, I understand that you live next to it and you don't want it, I understand. Well, I assumed, I apologize.
Said that E-DAC not represent you, right? Well, tell me exactly what you said.
A different board. Economic Development Authority is governed by a board, a different board. Correct. We appoint them.
What's that? I didn't hear it.
That we appoint.
That we appoint, and that is correct.
So are there funds separate from your funds?
Mr. Johnson, can you explain that?
They're a budgeted item, yeah.
We fund, they are partially self-sufficient, and we fund them the rest of the way. Correct. We fund them.
Well, I think the citizens deserve to know that on this $30 million loan that you took out to buy this land, there was $700,000 of that was to pay interest, interest only, our tax money.
No, ma'am. Not your tax money. No, ma'am. Your tax money did not take out that loan.
No, I'm not saying the loan, I'm talking about paying the interest.
That wasn't your tax money either. This is going, this is going to be fully funded. When they took out the loan for the property, they did that so the county would not be on the hook, and the taxpayers would not be on the hook for this. When they took out the loan for the property, they did that with the bank, they worked out the interest and the fee schedule, and they already had something in place, a purchase-sale agreement for somebody else to buy the land for more money than the development already paid for the land. So actually, there's a windfall that's coming back to the taxpayers, coming back to the development authority. That was not tax money that was used for that, and anything that was fronted is going to be repaid to the development authority or anybody else. Anything the development authority has ever used of county funding is going to be repaid to us. But we did not front $30 million for this property.
Oh, I didn't say you fronted it, but I said, is that that $700,000 that they took, part of that 30 million to pay the interest, they ran out of. The county has been picking up that tab ever since, probably, if I remember correctly, it was in April, that the county has started paying on that interest only, they've been banning, oh, I've got, I've got the email.
You can take lots of things out of context.
I think the citizens deserve to know that.
The citizens can come and ask that, but if you take something out of context, if you get, if you don't open records request, and you get one email, you may think you found the flaming arrow, and that may not be the case, you've got to put it in context with everything else.
Half the problem is even getting information, because it stalls, stalls, stalls.
No, ma'am.
Open records, they will not.
If you don't get it, it doesn't exist, or there's a reason legally that you can't have it, and I think that's the frustration.
It's, "Well, I got to get the county attorney to look at it, well, I need to get, oh, it must have went in your spam mail, I'm not really sure." How does that work?
Nothing I say is going to make you change your mind, we'll just have to agree to disagree.
No, it won't. Thank you. Erin, do I have two Erins?
I heard Karen. I'm sorry. I heard Karen.
Oh, I apologize, hold on. Karen, why don't you go next, then? Erin?
Karen Phelps, 235 Kestwick Drive. In 2022, there was surge of book challenges at our public library. These were persistent and repeated challenges, often dozens of books at a time, and they were by just one or two people, but they were very disruptive to our county librarians, taking time away from helping patrons or doing programming. These challenges even escalated into personal attacks against the librarians, accusing them of grooming, pedophilia, and distributing pornography. Rather than defend our county librarians, our leadership decided to develop and adopt new shelving guidelines, and the result? 22 library staff have left, as a lot of people don't think that can be characterized as a handful of bad apples or troublemakers. 22 staff have left, and six books, six books were moved from the young adult/teen section to the adult section. All of those books had to do with LGBTQ content or characters. Our elected officials are so committed to these new guidelines that when they learned that library board members representing Burke, Lincoln, and Warren were considering revising the new shelving guidelines, or reversing the new shelving guidelines, our county began to move to a one-county library system, which we are now. And we have a new county, we have a new library board that is supposed to be an independent policymaking body. I feel that that is impossible, given that the new library board's chairperson is the county commissioner, Ms. Malir, and the vice chair is a county employee, Mr. Luton, who as a county employee does answer to the commissioners. Book challenges focused on books that had LGBTQ characters or themes, because the challengers did not want to normalize these people, and I hope you can all hear the dehumanization of that statement. Reading about gay people does not increase the likelihood someone will be gay or make them gay. If what we read determined our orientation, then we would all be straight, because for hundreds of years, all the characters were heterosexual in the books that we read. The real danger in hiding these books in the adult section is the dehumanization of a subset of people. The amazing gift of literature is it allows us to walk in someone else's shoes, to see their perspective, to feel their humanity. Allowing our teens to read books that have gay or trans characters will not make them gay or trans, but it will allow them to see those people as people, as humans, as other children of God, and that makes our community safer. Because when we portray a group of people as not normal, and we're making it okay, in fact, we're even working to deny their existence, and we are dehumanizing them, that is when it becomes okay to silence them, to trample their rights, and even inflict violence. The county has sacrificed 22 employees and countless hours and energy to move six books, but we have not made our county safer, quite the opposite. I think instead of investing that much time and energy into these new guidelines and a one-county, single library system, we would have been better served, our commissioners would have been better served, defending our librarians, enabling our teens to see their neighbors as neighbors, so we can love our neighbors as ourselves, and being more transparent with the public about the plans for the data center before it was a fait accompli.
I apologize, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
My name is Erin Bilyeu. Address, full transparency, residential address, 3643 St. Hood Street, Arizona. Business address, 712 Main Street, Suite 3100, Houston, Texas. I intended to speak during the actual reading of the data center, I didn't get my foreman on time, but, so apologies for that. I am here in support of implementing the standards and the zoning district for data centers. I personally have developed data centers in over 40 countries in my previous roles at Microsoft and at Meta. I do want to also be transparent that my company, Cloverleaf Infrastructure, has no involvement in White Oak Business Park project, but we do have interest in developing data centers in other portions of Columbia County, and standards are a step in the right direction in support of responsible development of data centers. I do applaud the overall approach of Columbia County. From what I've heard from previous meetings, either person or watching on video, there are some valid concerns that have been expressed, and I think the standards that are being proposed, the zoning actually does a good job of addressing a lot of those. I will say that this really is, does represent kind of the best practices in the industry. We work with a lot of different communities that are implementing these standards, and what you're putting in place really represents kind of the best of the best, sort of in an aggregate. There are valid examples expressed by other people where people or communities have gone to greater extremes in terms of either setbacks or decibel levels, but implementing those as a totality makes data centers really undevelopable. So I think you've really done a good job of walking the line for this community in terms of what is a equal and will be a good blending of the standards. Some of the components will be challenging for us to meet, the setbacks in particular, the 500-foot setback is- The setbacks in particular, the 500-foot setback is a very aggressive setback, more so than I've seen in many communities. I know there was an example, someone mentioned of 1,000 feet. But again, at some point, you get to sort of unattainable standards. So while aggressive, I think it's a very progressive approach and we look forward to continuing to develop data centers or working with this group as well as the planning and zoning that will be necessary to implement potential additional projects in the future. Data centers do represent a significant economic development opportunity. And I know there are concerns about them, but in terms of being a good neighbor and having minimal impacts, they really are much better than a lot of the, a lot of the alternatives, whether that be healthcare facilities or whether that be industrial, whether that be logistics. There's a lot of other types of facilities that go into these industrial zoned areas that have a much, much greater impact on communities. So obviously, we support those. All of, all of the concerns that have been expressed, whether it be light, whether it be sound, power consumption, whether it be water, those are all rooted in truth. I can give specific examples of personally having sourced a million gallons a day for, you know, small data centers in Arizona, data centers in Northern Virginia that are placed very close to residential properties that cause a lot of noise concerns. Again, all of the, all of the concerns that one has expressed here are rooted in valid truth. But the reality is, the way the data center industry has evolved, modern standards that are being put into place and the way things are being designed and developed today, take all of those into account. It's, it's the state of the industry have to meet these standards in order to have that social license to operate. So our firm in particular, I can't speak for other developers, but we're fully committed to working within those standards and addressing kind of the, the best practices that you put in place to, to, you know, move these things forward. Couple of comments I will make is that we are fully committed in all of our data centers. At Cloverleaf, we do not consume any water for cooling. We do implement closed-loop systems. All of the projects we've sold to date to our end users, they've all made that commitment. And we would look forward to putting that in any development agreements that might go in any projects that we might move forward with here in Columbia County. And just as a matter of putting facts on the table, when I was both at Microsoft and at Meta, within my purview was ownership of the sourcing of water for data centers. And I can 100% positively confirm there are no wells at the social circle site that is owned by Meta. In addition, because of addressing concerns relative to that neighbor, we also conducted a study there that confirmed that the groundwater flow was actually from that particular neighbor's property towards the data center. So there is no possible way that the Meta facility had any impact on the neighbor in question that's been in the media relative to the social circle. So again, those are just facts I know from my, my previous life. So appreciate the time and you giving me a few minutes about our support for the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Howard Johnson?
Johnson, 252 St. Hood Road. Mr. Steed, I'd like to offer you both my congratulations and also my condolences. If I was sitting up there, there'd be one less guy here to speak at these meetings, they'd be over a little bit quicker. I come here today to recommend that, Mr. Steed, you appoint Ms. Sandra Bowers to the Library Board of Directors as your appointee. Ms. Bowers would bring 14 years' experience serving the Columbia County Library as well as the Masters in Librarians Science, a lot of institutional knowledge in our library specifically, that will help the new board in guiding as we move forward with the changes being implemented by this board. Mr. Steed, folks voted for you for a number of reasons. You and I both know, we spoke to a lot of the residents of District 2. Number one thing people asked me was, well, what does a commissioner do? The number two thing, as you spoke with me about, was property taxes. And the number three thing is probably that their neighbors parked on the street. The library was not a high priority for voters and it is the single thing I campaigned on. So while that 46% didn't need to explain was not the majority, I feel confident in saying that right now, I speak for myself and the 2,553 other people who voted for me, that we are galvanized for a single issue. That 46% is not the majority, but it is certainly the largest single plurality of voters. As I said, there are a number of reasons to vote in this race. I gave the voters exactly one reason to vote for me. And so understand, I do not take this lightly when I say I speak for over 2,000 other people. For context, I counted 58 people in this room at 3 to 6. So imagine about 40 times that number of people in here backing my recommendation. We do want a professionally ran library that is open to everyone in the county, where everyone can feel accepted and loved. And I hope that you keep that in mind in your decision-making going forward. That's all I've got for this evening. Thank you all so much.
Howard.
Yeah, Howard.
Elijah Sapp? Will please just state your name and address for the record, sir?
My name is Elijah Sapp, 3953 Almond Drive. This is my first time speaking at one of these events and I had a lot to say, but people came before really had answered most of my questions. So the main thing I wanted to say is, um... Alright, so during my research for, you know, what I wanted to speak about, which was the data center, one thing I came across was multiple people were saying that they didn't feel like this community really pays attention to what they have to say. And that's something that I felt as well, after doing a lot of research, a lot of people will speak about the library and then the votes go on as they are. And, you know, no public comment, I mean, yeah, no public comment truly considered, it seems like. That's something that I really wanted to say, honestly. It's in terms of that. Yeah. It's a lot.
Thank you.
Karen.
Susan, Susan Warren?
Before I speak, well, for this thing a little bit, before I speak, I have a question I'd like to ask, allow that. The open house planned for Thursday for the Foundations for the Future, I've seen two different times posted for it. One on the website, 3:00 to 4:30, but another release somewhere said 4:00 to 5:30. What is correct?
It's 3 o'clock at the Exhibition Center?
Yes.
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock. And you are allowing questions at the event, is that correct?
Mr. Sterling will be leading that, so we'll let him answer.
Yeah, as it states, it is an open house. It's for the public to come out. It's a chance for them to, if they haven't had a chance already to review the plan, you know, we'll have staff there to kind of walk and talk you through a little bit of what's there, as well as an opportunity for you to provide comments and feedback on the plan if you've had a chance already to read it.
Thank you. Okay. Susan Warren, North Tubman Road, Aplin. Tonight is the first reading for the 90-101 data center zoning document. For passage at the second reading, there are several things I'd like to suggest. In the 90 dash, is it working?
Yes, ma'am. It is.
In the 90-147 use provisions under generators, I would like to see you add strict power from the use of the emergency generators being sold to Georgia Power's grid.
We would like to keep all that. Say that, start over, say that again, Ms. Susan?
I just said that in that section on generators, that I would like to see added that you don't set, allow them to sell any of the power that they generate from the emergency generators back to Georgia Power's grid.
Okay.
Or use other places.
Because of the sale of it or you don't want them creating energy? Tell, tell me more about that.
Well, if they decide to run the emergency generators when it's not an emergency, just to produce power for Georgia Power, I wouldn't like that. Is that clear?
That, that makes sense.
Okay.
Very expensive to run emergency generators, so I don't think they would, would do that, but...
Who knows? You know, some of their very busy days, they might ask. Okay? And then the next section was about the wells. And I, I do know that someone already discussed some of that, but it was something that I had a little different thought on. Said that you wouldn't allow wells, but it says that that is limited to the areas that are served by Columbia County Water Utilities. And then Commissioner Duncan said on October 21st, there would be an $80 million water system paid for by the developer so that would not be owned by Columbia County.
Well, they would, we would own it, but they would pay for it, ma'am.
They are gonna pay for it.
If they needed the water, if they needed the water, they have to pay for the upgrade, but they don't need the water.
Okay.
If they need it, they have to pay for that system. It would, it would cost them $80 million.
That's what I wanted to have clarified, please. And as far as, you know, paying EPD wouldn't, would override, we would override EPD on that. Montana has had a problem with people build, drilling wells even after, even in areas where they don't applica, don't allow further application processes. It's gotten so bad that groups in Montana have gotten together and filed suit against the state and their Department of Natural Resources. So, you know, people don't always follow the rules. Under environmental regulations, there's the development shall meet all local, state, and federal requirements in regard to applicable environmental regulations at the time of construction. This brought to my mind stormwater when I read it. Storms dropping much heavier rain and forecast to increase more in the future. What's done at construction might not turn out to be sufficient. Will they pay a stormwater tax like our residents?
That's not in this district, like we are on this side of the county.
They're gonna be getting stormwater. I really think they need to pay it. I have to pay it.
You live on this side of the county?
I live right over here. Yes, ma'am. I live on North Tubman Road and I pay stormwater. And I don't get much benefit out of it since my land still stands three inches deep in water every time it rains. I would like to see requirements in this document for the incorporate closed-loop or gray water system. I think would actually be better than glycol closed-loop system. Have you considered gray water system? Along with battery energy storage system. However, the most important addition that should be in part of, in this zoning, is that public notice required, is that should be public notice required for 30 days prior to the Planning Commission, where these centers are voted on with two such meetings held. One to present the project details and the second to possibly incorporate any public concerns prior to their vote on the project. Then there should be public notice required for 30 days prior to the first presentation at the Board of Commission meeting with public comment allowed before voting. Then public notice, excuse me. Not after the fact. In fact, I believe all public comments at the Board of Commission meeting prior to voting. Vote and then you tell us what it's gonna be. I'd like to have our vote. Georgia Power recently applied to the PSC to be allowed to build an additional generation capacity of 10 gigawatts, $0.6 billion project. The votes on this project will be held in December. The two new PSC commissioners voted in on November, November 4th will not be sworn in until January 1st. Several concerned organizations asked that the vote be delayed for 30 days and were denied. Based on the past rubber stamping of everything that Georgia Power asked for, I had no real expectations that the votes of these two commissioners would override the three sitting ones. However, I did want to see on the record, someone actually voting for the needs of residents rather than the mega corporations. If the AI boom actually goes best bust as some are predicting, we, the residents of Georgia, not those corporations, will be on the hook for paying for this through the increases in our power bills, of which we've already had six in the last three years. Now, sorry, my allergies are bad. An article recently posted by the Macon newspaper reported residents voicing their concerns over a proposed data center there, not in Macon, but in that area. Kimberly Lingelback, an information system professor at Middle Georgia State University, and some residents banded together and sued the Twigs County Commission. Said she knows these innovations require support, including infrastructure to power them, but added that regulation of those structures are needed. You don't have to lock things down so you cannot be innovated, but you do have to regulate them. Develop these regulations, policymakers need to zoom out and look at the long-term impacts of data centers. Adeline Burke, Assistant Professor of Environmental Engineering, Mercer University. And she said she teaches her students about the triple bottom line, a business framework that measures impacts in three, people, planet, and prosperity. In her opinion, sustainable development should enhance the social, environmental, and economic aspects of a community. That, what so many who have spoken here feel, was accomplished when they helped in developing Vision 2035. And what we feel now is that being thrashed with the White Oak Data Center. Then Chris Clark, CEO of the Georgia Chamber of Commerce, spoke and said the economic benefits associated with new data centers outweigh the possible impacts. In my opinion, folks, that's a lot of hooey. Just feel free to insert whatever words you'd like there.
DJ Haddon? Take your name and address for the record, take five minutes.
Yep, DJ Haddon, I'm at 825 Little River Lane. So some of you guys know me as, I own Haddon Outdoors there in Aplin. My wife teaches in, in Aplin. And, you know, I'm also, I work for Shorten Williams, that's my real job. I've been with them for 28 years, so. I mean, first, let me start off with, I understand the concern of the data center in Aplin. I just wanted to share some thoughts on it as well. And it's, a lot of this is coming from, I guess, the, the groups I see on Facebook and, and some concerns I see that maybe kind of misled some of the things. And I'm not, definitely not as in-depth on data centers as I see some of the residents here as well. But I, I just, when the land was purchased, I know everybody was on, you know, up in a roar about that and, you know, land originally, it was nine million, then it got sold to the Development Authority for close to 30 million. But me personally, is me selling paint for a living. I'd much rather 1,000 to 1,200 houses be there because that would have made me a lot more money. But, so, I mean, I just, we, we talk about the house of $30 million, $30 million when the land was purchased. thirty million dollars what the land was bought for, and everybody was like, oh, that's so, so bad. But if the developer would have been able to sell that for a thousand houses, I mean, we were talking, you know, seventy-five to a hundred million dollars is what his in, in use would have been after all that time. But just, you know, just, you know, it would take some cash to get it developed, but his overall profit would have been much higher. I just, I just saw those numbers on the, on the, on the internet. And I say all this to say, the county staff and commission has heard the complaints of their citizens for the last several years. No more houses, traffic, and here recently taxes. The data center project, in my eyes, addresses most of these for the residents. I have spoken person with some of the Georgia Power leadership team myself, and if it's a lie, they told it. But there will be zero cost to taxpayers to power these data centers. The centers will pay for every penny of construction of lines going back to the plants. Georgia Power sees no issues empowering these facilities. And when it comes to water usage, if you Google ten times, you get ten different answers. I am confident in the commission and staff will do the homework and hire the right professionals to research and design what's best for our Columbia County. Let's not forget, everyone who is sitting up there live in this county. They want their kids to live in this county, and they want to watch their grandkids grow up in this county. So for us as citizens to think they're out to misuse our resources is not a fair statement in my eyes. Thank you.
Saying no executive session items, only one more thing to do?
Make a motion to, Erin.